All right, call the May twenty eighth school meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. We'll start with approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We would second any discussion on the agenda. All right, all those favor approving agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, on to comments and suggestions from citizens. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak to the board? And we have some retirees in the room, and we'll get to students in just a little bit. All right, hearing done, um, I was just talking, I hate the thing. So, just so you can tell your, your former classmates, your classmates, we are not going to schedule another meeting for them to meet their deadline for their class. You're the last one here, so you get, uh, stand up, say your name, your class, and or your teacher, and your favorite subject, please. We'll start in the back there, or not back, sorry, or your back.
Um, sorry, I was just telling, um, I'm in Mr. Mommy's class, and my favorite subject is probably.
Not government.
Physics.
Ooh, nice.
Um, my name's Olive Cory, I'm also in Mr. Mommy's class, and my favorite subject is what's for sale.
I don't know.
Just hanging out.
All right, you're right here.
My name's Luis, I'm also in Mr. Mommy's class, and my favorite subject is neither.
All right, thank you.
I'm Colin Ires, I'm also a part of Mr. Mommy's class, and my favorite subject is to be Jasmine.
Thank you. All right, any of us can sign your papers, um, in regards to bed north, I guess, so.
You want us to write special note?
Not even gonna go there. All right, consent agenda, any approval, Matt?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Did we say any discussion on the agenda, if we consented enough?
Just one, and I don't know if Dan or Joe can add, I see that personnel, have we hired all our, do we have all our teachers hired?
Uh, special ad at Virgil Rissom, unless it was on there, that was the last position, last position, now, course they may lead to now and then.
Right.
Yeah, I think he actually hired it, so I, we're done.
Good though. All the favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, consent is approved. Now, we are moving into, we have two public hearings tonight. So the first one is on the budget amendment, Jill, you wanna start that off, describe what that is?
Sure, I can, um, it's not unusual this time of year to have a budget amendment for the year in which we're in, I know we talked about it a little bit last time. Um, so when we set the budget in the previous year, there's just a lot of things that can happen throughout the year that, uh, caused the budget to change a little bit. It's a district-wide budget, it's not general fund, we're not looking at changing our general finance spend balance or anything like that. Um, primarily, it's due to, um, the bond projects that we had, budgeting for phase two, which is why it's so big. And then some of the other big items relate to grants, we got additional grants that we didn't know we were going to get, so we had to budget for this spending work. Um, so this meeting, I'm asking for board to go ahead and submit the, uh, budget amendment as presented for this year twenty four to the department management account.
So our public hearing is open, is there any public input on the budget amendment as of today? All right, hearing done, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved. All right, um, all the favor of closing the public hearing of the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we're closed, uh, board member discussion, we have any questions for Jill on this topic? Thank you, Jill, for all you do. All right, I'll entertain one more, um, motion to approve the budget amendment. So moved. We've seconded, uh, all those favor of approving. It says not, sorry.
I'm treating, it says roll call.
All right, we'll do a roll small votes, all right. Would I?
Happy aye.
Eckhart aye.
Linda man aye.
Pratt aye. All right, we have approved budget amendment. I'm gonna check this one, Jill, it will be, it will be, you're right. Great, um, now we're gonna, uh, open the, have a public hearing on the district solar project, so that's open now, Jill, do you want to start?
Yeah, just the solar project is part of vision twenty twenty-five, uh, we did put out a, to get bid by building. And well, we requested eighty percent of the energy to be, uh, solar, our solar farm, I guess, to have eighty percent of the energy per building used. Uh, we wanted to break it down by buildings, so we have worked with two local utilities, and if we can't get a ten, fifteen-year-old payoff, then we wouldn't want to invest the money, if it's gonna end up being twenty, twenty-five years, um, so we'll get it. As of now, we know of two companies, uh, that are gonna bid it, we did have one other company, uh, local company, they just don't have the manpower, uh, to do it, so they backed out.
So you're saying that there might be some schools that this does work for, that you present, and then the.
Yeah, all of our buildings with Mid-America and Alliance will work.
Okay.
You can go a hundred percent of your electric use in the, with the two major utility companies, each city sets their own return rate, uh, what they will buy back. Um, I believe it's right at fifty-five percent, so then you gotta calculate it out, we'll have fifty-five percent how long it'll take you to pay off those. And so we'll see how that comes out, but our intent would be to do every building in the district.
Okay.
All right, is there any public input on the solar projects? Hearing done, now.
We close the public hearing.
Sorry. Okay, it's been first and second, uh, all the favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, now we're into board member discussion, um, I guess, only I have, as we've done, is that, uh, John Glenn now, somewhere you're.
It's been three to four years, and we save, uh, just over twenty thousand a year, like twenty-three thousand a year.
So.
Uh, saves eight and a half years for that project, so. We would estimate if all buildings were done, it'd get three hundred and fifty thousand dollar general savings, you could.
Go towards teacher salaries.
Salaries and volumes, yeah.
Great, any further discussion?
And we know, um, I know John Glenn has a lot of space, and in general, I think there's lots of space for the solar panels to be identified, like we're.
They will do that too, so we prefer the ground, but if we get to the center, like if we do, elderly, you know, junior high probably has property for it, Ed White Nice will do not have property and have to go to rough. Uh, then there's extra expenses, when you would, uh, do something on work, you gotta pull them off and then put them back up, that's the downside to it. But that's, we left that up to the companies too, to give us those recommendations, leave our preferences round.
All right, any other discussion? All right, this one is roll call vote as well, so. I will entertain, uh, approval for the solar projects for the district. Second. All right, we moved to second, we'll start with roll call. Way.
Happy aye.
Ever aye.
Linda man aye.
Pratt aye. All right, we have approved solar projects, Jill. All right, um, moving on to the this year's retirees, I see a couple here.
Definitely a couple here, I'll go with the error, so we'll bring them up, and we just, we started doing this last year, recognizing our retire, retirees.
Oh, yeah.
And so, uh, we do have two, but I'll read all four names, uh, Christie Liski, if you would come up. And George, proud of taking a lot too, so Christie worked for us for twenty-one years, they're safety numbers. And Joey, twenty-nine years, and we also have Larry Bravant, uh, twenty-five years, and Dale Tuffy, thirty years of service, so. And then we have Pat Amangal for thirty-two years of service, and those, uh, pre-ops during your time.
Okay.
There's a lot going on, we appreciate everything you've done for the district and all of this, so.
Hey, ready, get in, get in there, Joe, you get in the middle.
It looks like Joe.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before you leave, can we, can we have you say stuff too? Oh. I roast? No. I know both of you, I've been able to see both of you in action, and you both have always gone above and beyond for your students, and we're just so lucky to have had you, and we're gonna miss you a lot, so thank you for everything you've done.
I will not miss my alarm clock. So we can go off, so she play golf, right?
That's right.
I just want to say, I appreciate all you've done for the district, and also I know both of you, that you've been good mentors for younger teachers coming in. Probably, um, in my day job, build the bench, they get that, next group of teachers come in, and just, uh, all the hours you put in outside of your normal day, and then no one noticed, I really appreciate that too. I know, Joe, you and I personally have been on, maybe special discussion and stuff, so again, you didn't have to do it, but you chose to do it, so I appreciate that.
I loved it, I love, I'll probably say. My heart's always there.
The queen of jungle.
Thank you.
You can always already.
I just sit down there, go in there, it's those cunts.
I will just say, the same, same thing, having been able to work with both of you and, and seeing you working with the kids and, and so forth, knowing exactly that your heart is out there for the best of the kids and the school district, uh, you'll be great in this. Uh, but I will tell you, retirement is.
I haven't heard anybody say they hate it.
So you guys, now you don't have to stay.
Thank you. Students are so lucky. Uh, all right, uh, moving on to, uh, state track qualifier.
So, look, we, we've had a really good spring, uh, for this board meeting, we had state track qualifiers, the list is in there. I would want to point out, Zach McMillan, uh, was a state champion in discus, uh, uh, we also had a number of other place winners, uh, um, within the meet, and then obviously a bunch of qualifiers, and so, congratulations to the track team, boys and girls, uh, they had a great season and a great track meet. Uh, girl tennis, first time, uh, um, we had three girls go to state tennis scene, uh, and then, uh, Madeline Jupson was fifth. So congratulations, uh, to the girls, and, uh, um, I guess was a boy who qualified for singles too. Um, so that was great, and I know our ball team will be on here next time, they placed eight, uh, eight places in the team, and our girl soccer team upset the number two seed today, and so they're in the top four playing Thursday, so our next board meeting, we'll have two more spring recognition yet to go.
All of you want to talk, since you're on your jump into that?
Please don't play.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to bills, Jill.
I have three million fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of the bills presented for approval for payment. Uh, my highlights include a payment to try to see electric for nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, that's a new three-year subscrib- subscription for the junior high and high school base centers. Um, there's a payment to Pacifics for twelve thousand thirty dollars, that's a partial payment for the food service to put in an account, I'll be paying for that full bill. And then a payment to the A A for twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars for the elementary science kits for twenty-one year.
I'll entertain a motion, make a motion to pay bills.
Second.
Say any further discussion on the bills?
Has it been three years since we put those payloads in?
Time goes by.
They work.
How about, yeah. They keep any busy?
Uh, less and less, which is good, just kids know that it's a thing, so.
All right, uh, all the favor of approving the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we approve bills. All right, no committee reports tonight? No reports. And then, no whole business, now we're moving on to, I think it's on one, Mr. Simmons, for the next year's student home, correct?
Correct, we've got some for this, this year's remodel and next year's student home. So, uh, what we have for, um, I can do just a quick report on the end white remodel, we've been working on that kind of rain days, snow days, uh, when we can with the students, uh, we've been doing, working on it for two years now, getting close. Um, the proposals assigned for that are some small drywall repair, obviously our kids are gone, we can't, uh, get them to get over there and finish that, so, uh, we just got a few hundred dollars in some drywall repair, uh, we've got, uh, a painting, uh, we want to bring a painter, we've, we've essentially got the entire house except for the drywall. All-new doors trimmed, and so when you get into painting doors, uh, it's best to have those sprayed. So this is a professional painting bit, uh, and then you may have noticed that the students tore out all the driveway. It's time walk, uh, last week, that was our last hurrah, we didn't let them coast as you graduation, so, tore all that out, and we've got K E flatwork coming in to replace that. Um, I believe we, when we purchased that land, the, um, the portion of the purchase assigned to that home was about a hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, we spent about eighty thousand dollars to remodel that, the objective there, knowing that if we develop that land, we're gonna try to sell a bunch of three hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes behind that, our main objective was, was to make sure that this was not eyesore, that this was a beautiful home. And so we did some things that we might not have done if we were just remodeling a house somewhere else in home, right? And so right now, we are at just under two hundred and fifty thousand in the comp set of receiving realtors, put that home anywhere from two hundred and fifty to two hundred and ninety thousand for a sale price, so we're not gonna make a tremendous amount of money on the, the, the place, cause it's got a small lot, um, but, um, but it's looking great, so. Uh, that's for the end white model, and we hope that when we get those things completed, there's just a few other small things that can get done, and get that down the market and try to get sold, um, for income payment.
What'll hold up on the market though is, we want to shorten the backyard, and the, but we have to expand the side yard twenty-five feet, but in order to change the lot lines, the city is going to need a plot for the development. And so that's really gonna hold us up until we decide what that development would look like, that house will not be able to sell, because we don't want to sell it. But, uh, we do want the land in the back, and so the side actually, it helps us, or it doesn't hurt us at all, one twenty-five feet off the side going to the road, so.
We want to make sure we can fit ample amount of lots behind there.
Right.
Where the current lot line is, it's kind of a weird spot, man's right in the middle of the adjacent, the, the homes on the other side, land's right in the middle of where those lots are, so we got some investigation to do. Um, if you know any questions about that, uh, for next year's student home, uh, Shane, uh, filled in for me at the last meeting, I appreciated that, I was able to attend one of my son's, uh, senior year events. He had said he had asked if it was a ranch home, yes, it is, we won't build a two-story home again. Uh, so it's a eighteen hundred and twenty square foot ranch home with a three-car garage in, uh, an existing part of Long Grove. Um, that's the size of the building there, that's the size of the garage, it only there, it's a little bigger house than they normally build, but they need to do that, so it's comparable. So we're asking you to, uh, sign the foundation proposal, the plumbing proposal, and the lumber proposal minus the windows and doors, uh, because we have, uh, a company that's considering making donation on those, so we'll wait on that portion till later day.
Thank you. So I guess, I, only question I have before, we have a couple, like six, I think we have to approve, but the kids were able to learn quite a bit on that remodel RC, though we may not have been a bunch of money or forecast.
Yeah.
Probably learned a lot of things that they weren't necessarily able to do.
Absolutely, a hundred percent, remodeling work is very different than new construction, and so they're able to tear out walls, change the, the structure of the main living space, um, remodel bathrooms, tear off and replace decks, uh, remove the driveway, take out all the trim of the doors and, and rehang, so it's very different when you're hanging a door in a square opening on a random house, and when you have to make that adjustment on a, something that's been around for fifty years, so, yeah, it was a great change.
What is Josh McChesney gonna do, just build his own, this has labor and.
Painting.
He, he's, uh, he's our drywall, he's our, he's our drywall repair guy, so they're just.
He usually paints, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, because I.
Yeah, no, he's doing, uh, if you walk through the house, I encourage you sometimes, if you get a chance to walk through the house, um, they've done a nice job over there. There's just miscellaneous things throughout, uh, both floors that just need some drywall repair work, so he's gonna go in and make sure it's all ready to paint.
Okay, is this your last board meeting?
Um, it's probably my last board meeting on, on, uh, salary, but I'll, I think I'll be back for one more.
Thank you so much for all that you've done over the years, you really made this program amazing, and had made such good relationships with all of, like you said, the windows and, um, I know that you done extra work, so thank you so much.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, thanks for all your work, appreciate it.
The house was great last week.
Just get sold now.
Yeah.
All right, um, so we'll just go through, we'll just go from A to F now, so, for the Peterson plumbing bid, um, I guess, any discussion on that report? Make a motion that accept Peterson plumbing bid for this student built home for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Do we have a second, any additional discussion? All right, all those favor approving that bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, now on to, uh, elder construction, for the, looks like the foundation bid for the next year's student home.
I make a motion to accept the elder bid for the foundation for the twenty-four, twenty-five student home.
Second.
All right, um, any discussion on that? All right, all those favor approving the elder construction bid for next year's student home, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes, we are on to the lumber bid for next year's student home.
Is that what?
Make a motion to accept the, uh, student built home lumber package to elder age lumber yard.
All right, I move to second, any further discussion?
If I could just, uh, just to reiterate, this is the one where we're accepting the lumber proposal at the top, but not the window proposal, the lumber.
It's crossed out, perfectly, all right. Any further discussion? All right, uh, all those favor approving the lumber bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes, on to the Ed White House remodel for Hill Painting. I entertain a motion on that.
Motion that we accept it for, uh, the Hill Painting Ed White House.
Any further, this is a motion, say aye, any further discussion? All right, all those favor approving the Hill Painting contract for the Ed White House remodel, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are approved, now on to the K E flatwork for, I assume that's the driveway one, um, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to accept the K E flatwork for the Ed White House remodel.
All right, the motion seconded, any further discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor of approving the K E flatwork bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, K E flatwork contracts approved, now moving on to the Josh McChesney contract, the drywall repair for Ed White House remodel.
I move that we accept Josh McChesney's bid for the Ed White House remodel drywall repair.
The motion seconded, any further discussion? All the favor approve the Ed White House remodel for the drywall, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. We're done.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, can I say something quickly? Go right ahead, uh, I've been here for ten years, and, uh, I've worked with, uh, alongside of a lot of school districts, where the administration of the school board does not support the building trades, uh, even a fraction of, uh, as much support as comes from the administration of the school board, so, it's, uh, I appreciate that, I know that the other people that work in the building trades and, and skilled trades, uh, in our high school deeply, deeply appreciate that, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, James, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, technology bid, well, I guess, Dan's.
Yes, I have stuff with me, I'm competing. Cause I think everything is so valuable. Um, so I've got two sets of bids here, um, both of them are summer updates, the reason they're split out, is the second one is the Dell State contract, um, but I'll just go through both sets of things. The Ritz kids are not very colorful, by the way. They are not, I'm trying, it's all about the numbers, so the information, I don't need the bells and whistles to distract you too much. Um, so the, the first bid has a number of things, um, the first half is Chromebook, um, the eight hundred and thirty of them is for students, so that's our fourth graders, seventh graders, and tenth graders, uh, and then the one sixty-seven is for staff, so two different models there. Um, next line is the licensing, that all came from the same company. Uh, the Epson breakout there is all of our projectors, um, that we're updating, just part of our summer refresh that we do every year, and then some new ones, um, with some of the construction projects we have throughout the district. Uh, same thing with the X Tron, those are all of the speakers that go along with those, so any projectors that either need new speakers or new construction that needs speakers, that's included there, um, and then there are some whiteboards, uh, for the smart boards that we're just finally unicycling through, um, in some of our smaller classrooms that we need, uh, updates on. So that is the, the massive bid response that has the one, two, three, four, five different, uh, breakouts there. And then the Dell Technologies, um, this is finishing up our move to Windows devices, um, for all of our elementary, and we did junior high and upper elementary last year. This is our pre-K through fourth grade, um, as well as some laptop updates, um, for some of our traveling staff. So this is the, the Dell quote, um, that finishes that, uh, shift for us to get everything under one operating system, which really just helps with support chrome shooting maintenance, all of those fun things that the tech world gets to do. So just seeking approval for both of those purchases, please.
Quick question.
Yep.
So we, if we cycle through Chromebooks, what do we do with the outdated, like retired Chromebooks then?
We, we actually get really good life out of them, um, so students get them typically three years at a time, so they get, especially into junior high, they get them seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and then we take the ones that are in pretty good shape, which is a pretty decent amount, cause we have them in cases, we have kids and families and staff that take really good care of them, uh, we cycle those back and live them in classroom carts. So our current, uh, first, second, third graders get basically hand-me-down devices that we'll keep anywhere from two to four years after that. Um, so we pretty much keep them until they can't take an update anymore, um, and have had really good success with that, so we, we get anywhere from five to seven years out of the Chromebook, had a pretty high usage rate when you look at how frequently they're used in our school's machine.
That's great.
Yep.
I guess I have similar question on the projectors, um, like how often are we, like?
We're. Seven years, give or take, um, so especially, these are the ones we're kind of moving away from, um, we're getting into more of the short throw ones, which are mounted on the wall, which actually helps with a lot of the, the backend of it, um, and those short throw ones have been getting us seven years, and so we'll get into, next year, we'll be replacing the first round of those, um, devices, and those are the ones that don't require a specific whiteboard to be interactive. So you can have a whiteboard that you can use the, the dry erase marker on, or a touchscreen pen on it too, so it's just one less piece of hardware you gotta worry about writing on.
Or somebody using a marker on it.
Yeah.
That'd never happen.
All right, any other questions for Dan on this, I was all entertained. First round of motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the technology bid as presented. I'll do that first, or?
Yeah, let's do that one first, yep, let's do that one as. All right, it's motion seconded, any further discussion? All right, uh, all those favor approve of the technology bid results as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's approved, now moving on to the Dell computer bid result, there, I entertain a motion on that.
I'm hoping to approve the Dell computer bid.
Second.
All right, so it's been motion seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing done, all right, all the favor of approving the computer bid results, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that one passes as well. Thank you everyone.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. All right, now moving on to the guest app pay schedule, Joyce, you were Jill.
I can do that side. Um, included in the packet is the guest pass, guest pay schedule for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we look at it and improve it annually. Um, there are no changes on it from what we were looking at in the current year, um, you, as you know, one percent. Um, there are no changes on it from what we were looking at in the current year. Uh, as you know, one percent district and all of the bargaining process and spending the money on the different groups. Just didn't seem like maybe this was the year to have an increase, so there are no changes on it. So I'm just asking for approval to continue to pay our subs and seasonal works at the same rates as we did the current year.
Thank you. Uh, here are two motion. My question for you all, alright. It's just keep us pretty much aligned with, they got a district, so. Still.
Um.
As you know of.
There we go. Back north in Ploton Valley and us all coincide, uh, as much as we, we talk a lot and make sure, um, there are some districts, we, we do things a little bit different. Uh, cause a lot of people will always need to pay what, what's paying, cause the way that has just different rules, well, again, we do, uh, so we're all within that range. And many of our sub shortages, throw money at it wouldn't solve our problem, but we chose investment this year and our staff.
True.
Um, so, but it's not gonna put us in a hardship.
Not gonna, no, it's, we're in a hardship anyway, uh, for subs. Are you just the bigger hardship?
Yeah, no, yeah.
I'm hoping to approve the guest staff pay schedule for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
Alright, spin motion, say any further discussion on this from anybody? Alright, all those in favor of approving the guest staff pay schedule, I just slowed down.
It's hard to say.
That's hard to say, sir. Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, we are approved. Moving on to, just get to see all of your staff here.
Yeah.
Oh, once a year.
This is our annual pizza talk, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Okay, what is yours?
Okay, so I'm here tonight to present the nutrition fund, um, bids that we do annually, um, for milk, our, our dairy products, bread products, vendor pizza. Uh, vended beverage, and then our prime vendor. Um, so in the packet shows each group, I think we're gonna just do one vote right?
Yeah, we have just one.
Okay, so first one is Prairie Farms, Prairie Farms and A E are the main, um, distributors. Um, they were really close, the only thing is, um, A E did not have a strawberry milk option, so they were avoid of that bid because we want that product.
Deal breaker?
It was kind of a deal breaker.
Oh, really?
Yeah, um, I think they were really close, um, price-wise, and then when you switch milk distributors, you have to, um. Get all the milk coolers, it, it just, it's a lot of hassle when they really didn't have all the products that we wanted, and kids do like it, so it's a popular product. Um, we've got great service at Prairie Farms, so I know issues there, so I'm just gonna move forward with that one, then with Prairie Farms, so. There wasn't that big of a difference really. Um, and then for bread, Panicle, Panicle is really the only bread distributor locally, um, we did get a bet, a bid from B and O Bread. We were really the only, um, district locally that got that bid, I'm not sure why, but it was still a little bit higher, um, and great service at Panicles, we'll continue there too. Uh, pizza vendors are pretty much the same, um, as last year, those prices did go up a little bit, maybe twenty-five cents, fifty cents, um, a pizza, but. Um, again, Happy Jones was the same, so we're gonna just use all of them like we did and just do a rotation, um, that's working out really well, so. It, it helps them, it helps us too, so, um, it worked out great. Um, we're gonna continue with Pepsi, uh, that's the next section of that contract, we're also gonna do some of our ending beverages from Coal Wholesale, they do sell some of those products too. Um, and so a few products that are popular that Pepsi doesn't carry, we're gonna buy from Coal Wholesale. And then Coal Wholesale, we're, um, rolling over that, um, bid with our Mississippi Valley purchasing group. Um, we've got, we always get really good pricing there, um, so we're really happy with that service. And they're willing to, with the delivery once we open up, um, Allen Shepherd, so, um, kind of a number, you know, there was continue with that bid with our group, so. That's good through June of twenty twenty-nine, so I'm just looking for approval on all of those nutrition bid results for next year.
Make a motion to accept the nutrition fund bid result as presented.
Second.
Next good motion, seconded. Any discussion on these? Alright, all those in favor of approving the nutrition fund bid results as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright. You can order the food now for next year. Alright. Now on to food service fees.
Okay, so, um, as far as, uh, breakfast and lunch meal prices, my recommendation is to increase the elementary, junior high, and high school by ten cent increment. Um, for the elementary, two eighty, for junior high, three oh five, high school, three fifteen, and then we do have specialty. Uh, we thought a premium lunch on, at high school also, that would be three forty. Um, the breakfast for adults is also gonna be increased to two seventy-five. Um, and that all, um, is in line with, there's a, uh, paid lunch equity, equity tool that is required that I complete annually. Um, we, we don't have to, um, complete it if we have a positive fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I still do it anyway, cause I like to see what tells us to, even schools that aren't free meals still do it, because you still wanna keep your paid lunch. Um, at a high enough level to, um, fit with like the, the federal's, federal reimbursement rate. So the federal government is re, is reimbursing at a certain rate, we're supposed to stay in that weighted average area. Um, and so my recommendation is ten says, we did not increase high school and junior high, but we did increase last year, but there was a six-year period where we didn't increase. So I feel like we're kind of playing a little bit of a catch-up on that, just to stay where we're, where we need to be. Um, and that's in line with a lot of the local schools as well, some are higher, some are a little bit lower. So some of them don't have their meal pricing done yet, so I tried to get that up until today, but they're not all completed yet.
Any questions? Is that, you mentioned the federal reimbursement, the window that you want to be in.
Mm-hmm.
What, is that on?
So that, okay, so the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, reimbursement rates are not out yet, they usually come out in July. So twenty-three, twenty-four is on there, so free rate is four dollars and thirty-four cents per meal, uh, reduced rate is three ninety-three, and then the paid rate for our paid students is over at forty-eight cents. So we wanna be somewhere in that, um, area of three eighty-five as a weighted average. Um, so I completed the assessment tool, we were at two eighty-six as a weighted average, or excuse me, yeah, two eighty-six. So we need to increase by like ten cents, we weren't wanting to increase by like fifty cents, we wanted the same increase as well, improvements to get that weighted average up. But I don't foresee, like I can see us, you know, maybe taking a year and just being stagnant next year too, I'm not sure, just depends on how meal pricing comes back. But our meal, meal pricing has gone up across the board too, I mean, just like when you go to the grocery store, right, right, it's just kind of up, so.
There's probably no talks of the COVID days where everybody gets them free in school.
No, mm-mm, no, for, for twenty-two and twenty-three, we did get a considerable amount of funding called supply chain assistance, so I could use that money to pay for, um. Non-processes, we used it to pay our milk, so pretty much every year a hundred thousand dollars has been paid by supply chain assistance fund that we received. I don't foresee getting that next year.
So that's really helped the budget a little bit, but I appreciate you trying to, that's small increment, so that it's not too much for a family to, to take on, so thank you for doing that.
And I do have a chart, if you ever interested in other schools and where we get, we just compare as a co-op group yearly, so it's kind of nice to have that history.
All here are two motion. Make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five district food service fees.
Second.
Any further discussion? And I just say thank you for working with the area schools and co-op, I know it's not, give you all the time, but really appreciate you trying to get us, thank you for that. Alright, all those in favor of approving the food service fees for next school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, we have approved, once a year, any budget extra, that's a make sure. Alright, uh, now on to the junior high dish machine.
So last year, um, we did a bid, um, for different items within the junior high dish room, because our dish machine's really old, and there was a couple other smaller pieces of equipment. We replaced, replaced some of that equipment, but the, um, major part of the bid was for a new dish machine, we have a Hobart machine at the junior high that's like thirty years old or something. It's been a champ though, it's all about really good, but it's been good to go. So, um, we bid out a new Hobart, and the winning bidder for that was Trinity Equipment, it was two bidders, um, for that, but they were the lowest bid. At the time of this recommendation, the bid was for sixty-five thousand, six seventy-two-ten. Since then, we revised it because, um, we're, we're looking at the Hobart team coming in and providing that install with our electric ball plumbing, H E A C. Because they have to do like a hood, um, part of the machine, and there's electrical before, then they install, then I'm after, so it's better they just have the whole team do that. So the new bid, um, total is, it's about seven thousand dollars more for all of that, so it'll be seventy-two thousand, six twenty-one, three will be the number for that. Um, but that machine is just pretty much, um, a really nice one. We went, we went big on that one till then, it's gonna last one time, it would be good.
So four years, right?
We're hoping for four years.
We're on the, we're on the. This is the only type of items her, carryover can even pay for. So, uh, there's, you know, that comes directly from the food service, comes from the carrier, where that's gonna accumulate, especially spring cold weather.
So that would put the junior high, they would really have almost all brand new equipment, um, I actually have a bid out, um, as we speak, not going to be due back in July. For two of the convection ovens, that's about fifty thousand dollars plus, but we replaced pretty much everything, and actually it's almost brand new. So that's exciting, cause the high school was brand new in twenty seventeen, and then Shepherd would be brand new, so we really won't have a lot of other, they're smaller pieces, but not a lot, so.
Make a motion to approve the junior high dish machine recommendation as presented.
Second.
Alright, spin motion, seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the junior high dish receipt machine? As noted, uh, with the revised, uh, price of around seventy-two grand, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, we are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, now moving on to change orders.
Alright, so the first change order is Reagan mechanical for six hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents, and I switched it from manual clutch valve to a automatic clutch valve.
Alright, make a motion to approve the change order one from Reagan mechanical.
Second.
The motion's seconded, uh, any discussion? Alright, here you're done. All those in favor of approving change order one to Reagan for the Hazel Willa, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that one's approved. Now on to the Rock River Electric one.
Alright, Rock River Electric is a change order, it's to move our fiber, uh, when we were, when we were redoing the welding lab, seeing the fiber and the way to get it going through the building, uh, the safest way possible. For not any future issues, so that was an increase of twenty-two thousand, eighty-four dollars.
And you're saying that that fiber went through the addition?
Yes, to the.
To the lab.
To the lab.
Yeah, it went that way.
Yeah, coming in and out of the new foundations that we, we had some major work.
Okay. Make a motion to approve Rock River, uh, Electric bid, to change the, uh, fiber.
Second.
Motion's seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, uh, all those in favor of approving the Rock River fiber optic change order, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? They were passed. Uh, answer wrestling facility.
This was the change orders we talked about at our meeting last time, it's a city requirement for the water, and then the glass, instead of using glass like we thought, they, they, the, the going rat glass that don't do that. And I couldn't guarantee it to last, surprised you guys got them out, and so we put a new glass in there. And so, uh, our poll appears just like a. They haven't hit, they wouldn't just, because it was volunteers who were with the glass, five thousand, eighty dollars, seventy-five cents.
Make a motion to approve the wrestling facility change order two, that I like, that's fine for the.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the change order for the wrestling facility, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that's passed. Onto Armstrong.
Okay.
First one.
This is our first one for Armstrong, and this was our request, that we wanted to put a crucible deck, uh, on a roof, not, uh, so because of the gym, and if we grab walls, and so it's, uh, for gym D C's roofing. At, uh, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Make a motion to approve the gym roofing, uh, roof change. Alright, so motion's seconded. Any further discussion on this? Alright, all those in favor of approving the gym D C roofing change order for Neil Armstrong, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that one passes.
And then partly along with has designed build structures, it is, uh, for a crucible deck, but also increasing the structure for the R T U units, our heavier, and anticipated, uh, and that's a five thousand, three hundred dollar change order.
Motion to approve the change order one with design build structures for Armstrong.
Second.
Okay, the motion's seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the change order, design build structures, uh, for Neil Armstrong, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, now on to the junior high, hey, we've only got like twenty-five more.
So, we have three for the junior high, uh, the first one is, because when they were digging up, uh, get ready for the puddings, the, the original puddings were a lot wider, they wouldn't have known that, so there was extra work to do to accommodate. Uh, and deal with the larger puddings, and so that's a change order of five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars.
And estimate the pudding stain is.
Yeah, they had to adjust what they were going to do to, to, I can't remember, they tore them out to get it down to build up next to it, or if, if we had to go around and add extra, but. Because they were so wide, they didn't anticipate there was work they had to do on top of that.
They just had to redesign, I'm moving there right now.
Yeah.
Definitely detail, just to account for it. Make a motion to approve the, uh. Increase of fifty-six hundred dollars for.
That guest party.
Alright, the motion's seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the Ired Works change order for the site concrete, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that one approved. Moving on to the next one.
Alright, the next, the next one is, uh, the storm, uh, um, line was not where it was at, so there was a lot of major work to do to get to the storm line and make those adjustments, and so that was a thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Motion to approve change order one with Ired Works junior high.
Second.
That's a motion, it's seconded. Just a question for. Why did they, who has, has the drawing to where that?
So, we get located, located, who came out, we hired that separately, the company wasn't even close when they located it.
One that said it was clay tiles.
Yeah, it's clay, and we had to, that's the problem, every time we do that, we find clay, we have to replace that way.
This is, uh. I'll bring back, uh, they embarrassed me for my day job, this is, it happens all the time, guys will swear, swear real quick. They actually will use like those dividing things to find utilities that are more accurate than people.
Like the water under there?
Yes.
Seems like.
Get you done. Alright, uh, we have a motion. The motion's seconded. Any additional discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the site work, um, mod to for junior high, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, site work is approved, now move on to Rock River.
Yeah, Rock River Electric, this is our switchgear needs more space in the, in the, where we anticipated in there, so they're removing some equipment that used to be all electric buildings, so we obviously, a lot of capacity and. And equipment we're not using, but it is extra work for fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve the Rock River Electric, uh, change order for junior high.
Second.
Okay, the motion's seconded. Any, uh, discussion on this one? Alright, all those in favor of approving the Rock River change order for the switchgear for junior high, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that one passes. Now on to, hopefully the last ones for Alan Shepard.
Yes, yeah, last ones, excuse me, for Alan Shepard, here, the first one is hometown mechanical, and that was to change the grills to match the. Oopers and everything.
Change the grills.
Just say architectural stuff. Yeah, architectural, but then, uh, we never had an isolation valve for the kitchen, uh, water line, and so we, we wanted, and, uh, we wanted to shut that kitchen off and have isolation valve in there, and so. That was for one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, thirty-five cents.
Motion to approve change order five for hometown mechanical, Alan Shepard.
Second.
Okay, the motion's seconded. Any further discussion on this one? Alright, all those in favor of approving the change order five, hometown mechanical for Alan Shepard, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that one's approved. Moving on to change order six.
Yeah, so there was a change order six hometown mechanical, the seam size had to be changed, but this one, we will do a change order, but then the amount we reduced off of Leggett's, uh, um, overall, their, their final bill. So Leggett's paying this one, because it was an architectural design. Leggett's paying this one because it was an architectural design issue. And so uh, approval of fourteen hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents.
You mean like twenty thousand dollars, right?
Oh, what?
I just.
Oh, no.
No. Sorry, I tried. Alright, um, I move here, we uh accept the uh change word. I'm six to hometown mechanical, the change is.
Second.
Yes, we've seconded. Uh, any further discussion on this one? Alright, all those in favor of approving the change order for the architectural effect, sorry. Um, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, motion passes. On to I S E for the steel.
So that the change order price in steel will come out, come back from Audabama um in two, two days from now. Uh, because uh the reason there was a cost decrease, they had to handle steel twice because Audabama's behind. Uh, so that cost twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve change order three with industrial steel workers.
Second. Second.
Okay, so motion seconded. Alright, any further discussion on this one? Alright, all those in favor of approving the delay costs to I S E, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Now on to Eric Works.
Again, same thing. They had winter conditions. That should not have happened because Audabama be in line for nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and cents.
Okay.
Motion through change order two with Irish Works and Alan Shepard. Second.
Spin motion seconded. Any further discussion on this one? Alright, so all those in favor of approving the delay to Irish Works, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Now on for Audabama.
So Audabama's decreasing their cost by thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents because of delays in the project with other contractors.
Move to accept this change order two, Audabama company for thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, so motion seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, I just have one thing. I appreciate um Russell working with them so that they're not passing the delay cost on to us and getting that back from their subcontractor.
And as a company, it's a labor shortage for them, right? This summer, they're way ahead of on all of our projects that they're involved in. And so it is unfortunate, but that was a labor shortage they had last summer that caused us to be three months behind schedule.
Alright, uh, all those in favor of approving Audabama change order, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, motion passes. On to River Valley Construction.
For Valley Construction, this is, we added insulation for sound uh and for a cost of fifteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents.
Motion to approve that change order two hundred.
Guys get the alternate.
Let me do it.
Second.
Alright, so motion seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, here you go. And all those in favor of approving the River Valley Construction change order, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Now last one for Rock River Electric for Alan Shepard.
And this is the work that they did to get us temporary power uh going. So we can use the facility from now until October until we get all of the power and fire up the kitchen next back over. And it's worth two thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve change order two, Rock River Electric for two thousand dollars.
Second.
Alright, so motion seconded. Uh, any further discussion on this one?
Can't believe we went to the whole alphabet line, double A.
I know.
So on, you guys put the Latin meeting.
First time.
Alright, all those in favor of approving the change order for Electric Brown Shepard, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, we're approved. Now on to the board meeting dates.
And I reduce the last month in my report, uh, but I would just point out uh that the major changes is the March meeting became the fourth. Uh, and the July meeting became the fourth. Uh, we end up with five weeks in there and we're coming out of spring break and uh there were other things for this July. Just helps us prepare better for the morning. Uh, otherwise they coincide with our typical meeting dates.
And noted in July because this place will be under construction.
Oh, that's right. June and July will be at the high school, um, because this will be used as an office and the office will be under construction. Thank you.
Alright, move that we approve the twenty-four, twenty-five board meeting dates.
Second.
If there's any additional um discussion on this? Put them in your calendar. Um, and then subject to change or whatnot, but this usually always stick by. Alright, all those in favor of approving the board meeting dates for next school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, we have approved. Now on to the superintendent's report.
Alright, uh, Precision twenty twenty-five, obviously tomorrow, the big day, we have the Alan Shepard ribbon cutting at two, two-thirty, I say two fifteen. Make sure we're there. If you can make it, please come. Uh, um, for that. And then the next day, softball, uh, we'll have its ribbon cutting. So two of the seven projects that are officially part of that will, I was a punchless, will be completed as of tomorrow. Uh, the regional innovation center are gonna start pouring concrete this week. And by the time they get that done, they're going to be, the north half of the building is gonna get pitched off pretty soon where they'll shut the doors and they'll just be working on the south half, it looks like. So that'll be nice. So they're able to continue on putting tile and bathrooms. They're doing a lot of finishing work in the north half of that building. And so things are going well. Uh, got a great start to the junior high and uh Neil Armstrong, uh, that's going uh well. The foundation, they're being poured. The walls are almost complete over at uh um junior high. And they're on their last wall, uh, um, the, the basins are. And so that's really nice. And then the stadium is based, they will work on the field today. Uh, we're getting ready to start picking up the rest of the outsides. That's what things are going well, both welding and uh Lancer Stadium, bold on progress. Nothing to say that we will not be done by the start of school year uh with those projects. And then the wrestling is uh probably July. Uh, it's sometime in July we'll get it. So things are going, things are going well with all projects. February was a great month to have the building, so we're, we're still benefiting from February now.